I call the meeting order. Will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara?
Here.
Mrs. Miga?
Here.
Mr. Berulovich?
Here.
Mr. Shoner?
Here.
Mrs. Dai?
Here. So I have no idea how we want to go in order for this. So do you want me to, I guess, the meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none, okay, I got that out of the way. So...
Never give them enough time.
What did you say? So we, what did you say?
It's bulletin two.
Right. Okay. So we're going to just change things up a little bit, and instead of doing our committee reports and kind of going through everything like we normally do, we've been in executive session discussing our strategic planning, and now we're going to be in the public portion of the meeting discussing strategic planning. So we'll get back to the other normal business, but we're going to continue on with Dr. Robert Zericki, who is our strategic planner, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Thank you, Pat, President.
Absolutely.
It's an honor to be working with the Cedar Grove Board of Education.
Just to stop you real quick, we need you to grab the mics.
Hold the mic, yes, sir.
We're just popping out. There you go. You should be on.
Am I good?
Yep.
Once again, thank you, Madam President. As I was complimenting the board, you really have a fantastic school district for the administrators that are here. I do a couple of roles in my professional life. One of them is I work for the Rutgers University Center for Effective School Practices, which is a division of the Graduate School of Education where our mission is to convert theory into practice. In the ivory tower, there's lots of research that goes on, but that's not always going to make its way into the hands of administrators, to teachers, and board members. So our mission is to disseminate that information, to break it down, to help schools and districts improve and meet the needs of all students in a manner that is effective because they're using research-based best practices. So one of the things that we do, we provide professional development. We work with a variety of grant programs. We just received a $2 million National Science Foundation grant to further computer science professional development and education in New Jersey. But one of the other services that we do is we do provide strategic planning and also analysis for boards of education. So in that capacity, I'm here tonight. I came over the summer and presented to the board on those options, and the board decided to contract this. So I'm here as a friend to help through this process and to ensure that it goes smoothly and that we do wind up with a strategic plan in March, which then becomes a roadmap going forward for the district. So thank you for having me. Tonight, I'm going to discuss the overview of that plan and some suggestions we make from Rutgers and talk about this process going forward so that people can become engaged in this. So these are the three main goals of the strategic planning process. The first one is to assess the current state of the district. Where are we right now? Then with the help of the stakeholders, meaning community members, staff and faculty, students and parents, how do we create a roadmap for the future to take this district for the next three years? And I think we're in agreement, it's going to be a three-year strategic plan. We strongly suggest at Rutgers that three-year strategic plans are the best. Some districts do five-year plans, but with education changing so much, society changing so much, five-year plans can leave the district. I gave the example of a district who did a five-year plan and said that by 2018, they wanted to fully implement the Common Core. Well, the Common Core went away in 2015, but yet they were stuck with a plan that really wasn't nimble enough. So a three-year plan is great, and not only that, three years from now, you're going to go through this process again and get everyone's input. And then lastly, to develop goals, measures of success, and timelines. So it's really, really important that each of the goals that are set by the board, there are specific ways to measure their effectiveness in a time-bound manner. So those are those suggestions. So anytime that I'm presenting, you guys can just interrupt me. It's completely okay. You don't have to. So the process that we worked out begins now. This is, in some ways, the launch of this process, and it's going to go until March. So we just finalized with the board how this process is going to go. So starting in November, the board is going to review data and do a needs assessment, in which the board looks at data, they look at things like budgets and audits and CUSAC reports and district performance data. And at the same time, the board, as I'm going to give a proposal tonight, but set the exact methodology that we're going to use in this process. Shortly around that same time, we're going to have stakeholder sessions. My partner in facilitating this process is Dr. Tracy Severns, who's the former chief performance officer for the state of New Jersey and is a very, very experienced facilitator, and she also works for the Rutgers Center for Effective School Practices. And she's going to facilitate four stakeholder sessions. The first one is for faculty and staff. The second one will be for parents, and then we have students and community members. Each of these sessions is two hours. It has a very specific agenda, in which we're going to ask very specific questions based upon research into district leadership, in which we're looking to find out exactly where are we, and then what are the aspirations of those stakeholders for the district, and then to conduct a SWOT analysis. A SWOT analysis is to look at, you know, what are our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities, and our threats, so that we then, yes, not like a SWAT team that's an O, not an I. So to get that qualitative data and so that each of those groups has a voice, the student group is always the most interesting. So we're going to be asking the faculty to help us with that. So then we're going to also, because that's just not enough to collect, we're also going to administer a survey in December. And we just discussed, it sounds easy, and we're like, oh, we'll get 500 people to respond to the survey, but when I show you what the survey looks like, you're going to see, it takes about five, maybe 10 minutes to fill out completely, maybe a little more. So we're working on some strategies, you know, parties, parties at people's houses to fill out the survey. And then that's another mechanism to collect some more qualitative data and some quantitative data, but for folks in the community who can't make it to those meetings, they can then complete the survey. And the survey, we're going to share it on social media, we're going to post it to the district website to cast a really wide net to get that information. So then Christmas break, you know, winter break into January, we're going to analyze the data and have it, and I'll show you the methodology for that. And then based on what bubbles to the top, we're going to work with the board to look at that data and to begin setting some goals and to put things in buckets. And I'm going to talk about that process a little more momentarily. We'll then construct a draft strategic plan based upon the goal set by the board and the input that we heard from the stakeholders. We will then present a draft strategic plan to the board that they will tweak and make their own. And then finally, in March, we will present that publicly with the aid of the board because it's their strategic plan, and then that's your roadmap for the next three years. So that is the overview of the process. It's a tried and true process. Please ask me questions if you have any about that.
There were, Kate, you said it was the board's strategic plan.
Yes. No, no, it's the district strategic. So it is the district strategic plan that is facilitated by the board. So, you know, really, it becomes a roadmap for the decisions that they make, developing budgets, personnel decisions. We were just talking about the role of the superintendent and the business administrator all tie into the strategic plan. That is the, that's the manual for what we're doing for the next three years. So it is a very, very important document. It really is important. Questions? Okay. So the methodology that we suggest and that I spoke about is a mixed methodology, which is a combination of qualitative and quantitative data. So we're going to collect data, we're then going to separately analyze the quantitative data, which will come from the survey, the qualitative data that comes from the survey and the stakeholder meetings. We then take those results and then we validate and triangulate them. And what that means is that we look at the quantitative data and then we say, well, you know, if folks are saying this goal was not met in the previous strategic plan hypothetically, do we see any of that in the qualitative data? And where can we make those connections? Or something, we're saying that this goal was completely accomplished, are we also seeing that in the qualitative data as well? And then how does that inform going forward? Do we need to revisit that goal, or was it fully accomplished? And then the results of the mixed methodology are then used to develop those goals I spoke about earlier. The needs assessment session that'll be upcoming for the board, we're going to look at a couple of really, really important, specific pieces of data. One, I don't know if the board always has the time to look at performance data. So we're going to be using a tool called LinkIt to look at some of that data that's going to disaggregate, not just, you know, because the data you get from the state is grade-to-grade level comparison. So this year, seventh grade, and last year's, when we compare those scores, it really doesn't make sense because I don't know the composition of that grade. But when we look at cohort performance, that's a lot more informative for the board. So LinkIt will do that. We will also look at the DOE Performance Reports and any other internal data. You were talking about some of the tools that you use to assess students, we'll look at that data. The board itself will go through the same SWOT analysis process that the stakeholders are going through. We will look at the recently submitted CUSAC. If you don't know what CUSAC is, it's the Quality Single Accountability Continuum. The new CUSAC manual just came out in September about the new regulations that took place and took effect in July. Welcome to New Jersey, that's how things work. So we're going to look at the old CUSAC DPRs and the new ones. And then the other thing we're going to look at too is we're going to look at budget audits. And I'm going to talk about the importance of budgets and how we set money because your priorities are a reflection of how you spend money, and that's important for the stakeholders. So the survey, so you can, if you want to write this down, or you can do that, but I'm going to show you what the sample survey looks like. And this is still a draft that the board members do have time to provide us with some input. And this is where it's not, it's not a popularity contest. It's not, you know, are you happy with your kid's school? Yes or no? It's not smiley faces. It's technical. So the first thing is we provide a link to the current strategic plan, and we ask folks to review the current strategic plan and look at the current goals. And we start off by saying, are there any areas that we missed? What are some areas that we might want to look to? And then we look at what are some strengths, what are some weaknesses? And then we drill down, and this is where we take screenshots of the current strategic plan. So the categories of the current strategic plan, the first one was community and communication. So we ask the community members which of these possibly were not achieved, which of them were addressed or achieved, and then we have a Likert scale to get that quantitative assessment as well. We then proceed to talk about the next area, which was curriculum. And there are those same exact questions, both qualitative and quantitative. Then the third area was character, and the last area was college and career readiness. So that puts us around 16 questions. So that's, that's a lot for people because in that time period, diapers need to be changed, dogs need to be walked, phones need to be answered, bedtime stories need to be read. So that's a lot. But we do then conclude by asking about the district's overall vision and mission statement. And this is really, really important because this is part of the district's identity, but it's also your district elevator talk, if you will, about who we are, what we stand for, what we're trying, what we're trying to do for children. So we ask a couple of questions about, can we update the mission statement? So critical friend, you know, providing this district has the honor of being a future-ready district, that's, you know, attaining that certification, might want to throw that in your mission statement because I think that's, you know, one, it's something to celebrate, and I think also it's, it's part of your brand as well. So I would think about doing that. And then the last thing that we ask her for general comments and then identifier, so we can disaggregate between parents and students and community members in those stakeholder groups that we spoke about earlier. So this is the draft right now. The board can tweak it. I suggest we don't go over 21 questions. We could always limit it. But it does, for the people who do take the survey, it does force them to engage with the current strategic plan, something that not everyone does all the time, so it has them revisit that. But hopefully, it jogs their memory about some of the things that have been going on in the district, and they can make connections like, oh, that's, that's why they were doing this, or that's why my child spoke about that. So any questions about that survey process? None? Okay. I'll gladly answer them. And for our stakeholder, our stakeholder sessions, which are going to be facilitated by Dr. Severns, we're going to be asking these questions. So every group is going to be posed the exact same questions. And this comes from a book written by Dr. Bernhardt, a series of books on the framework for school improvement. And similar to where I said, their overall goals begin with an assessment of where we are to where are we going, what is our aspiration, these questions take us through that exact same process. And it's not all the time that we get the pause in organizational life to ponder these questions. So, you know, when people say, oh, it's only a two-hour session, a lot is going to come out of that two-hour session when people have to spend 10 minutes with where are we now? And then another 10 minutes where, how do we know where we're going and how are we going to get there? The last question is really important, one because, you know, is what we're doing going to make a difference? That leads us in a couple places. One, are there other models of success that we can follow? Are we being completely innovative here and going in our own path? And if so, is there any research to substantiate that? And then also to look at, you know, is this research-based best practice? So that's really important, and that gets us away from, I said, you know, so we're not like, I want to build a hockey rink. Well, do we have a need for it? No, I just think we should have it. It really focuses those because you'll be surprised what you get in some of those stakeholder sessions, really focuses us on this whole process of building a roadmap to the future. So a couple of suggestions, these are some slides based upon my knowledge of your fantastic superintendent and having spent some time with the board and where you are and looking at your school profile and looking at your website and having visited the schools. Here are some suggestions that I think should be in your strategic plan, some things that I see going on in the district and something that we should address, and this is some of the things that we will talk about with the stakeholders, is the idea of innovation. This is an innovative district, and everyone likes to throw that word around, but let's dig a little deeper and actually talk what does innovation mean? And when you break down innovation, it means new technology, which you guys are doing, but it also means new pedagogies. And the board was just talking about the idea of personalized learning, which I'll discuss a little more. And also new learning spaces. And I'm not just talking about flex seating that we buy from IKEA and, you know, bouncy chairs and beanbag chairs in third grade. We're talking about virtual learning spaces, augmented reality, and where are we moving into that? Because this is a pathway to the future, and three years from now, those things are going to be ubiquitous technologies. So this board and the superintendent, I think the superintendent's going up on stage, right, to receive the Future Ready Awards next week?
We're all going. Absolutely. We're all locking hands.
So everyone's going up on stage.
You can put your hand up.
And, yeah, see? There you go. And you're, it's, you are...
You plus 19.
You are very, very right to be proud of the Future Ready Certification Program. The National Future Ready Framework is organized around seven gears, but the heart of that framework is personalized learning. So it's, you know, a lot of times, people have a hard time discussing Future Ready because it's such a big deal, and inevitably, they talk about digital tools and college and career readiness, but all of that is for the purpose of personalized learning, in which for each child, they have specific learning goals where they're engaged. So a suggestion is that in the stakeholder sessions, that we engage stakeholders around the definition of personalized learning, to see what is their familiarity with it, and also to build awareness that the board has already taken steps through the Future Ready Schools program to get there. And having attained Bronze Certification, you guys are going for Silver Certification, that this is a term that should be acknowledged in the district because this is, this is your teaching strategy, and you're using the technology to get there. Another suggestion is to talk about how personalization meets the needs of all kids. So through the use of digital tools or not through the use of digital tools, personalization really changes the paradigm of education from a vertical paradigm, where we went to school where high flyers, AP kids are at the top and special ed's at the bottom, to a horizontal paradigm where they're all kids. And based on data, some get intervention, those same kids might also get enrichment, but it's based on data, all kids get intervention and enrichment. That's really the heart of personalization and I think makes it a lot more real for folks than reading a definition on a slide that everyone got to about here and said, okay, when's he going to advance the slide? This makes it a little bit more real, but it's also important to show that personalization is about every single kid in the district. So if the district is going to focus all this energy on Future Ready Schools, it's about meeting the needs of every single kid. The other thing that I suggest that we discuss is to make folks familiar with response to intervention. Response to intervention, multi-tiered systems of support on how to deliver intervention when kids, and every kid is at risk, sometimes struggle. And how do we implement that? What does core instruction look like? What do tiered interventions look like? And then eventually, 504s and special ed. This is now a requirement in CUSAC, that districts do have an RTI program. So that's important because the district, every district needs to attend to this now, even districts that have really, really high-performing RTI programs, they still need to attend to this right now. So I think it's important to lay that vocabulary out there for parents and show where personalization becomes actionable. The other thing that I spoke to the board about is that there are new CUSAC regulations in New Jersey. And CUSAC is the mechanism by which there's accountability for school districts. CUSAC is organized around five main areas, and this is the new CUSAC manual. The first area is instruction and program. The second one is fiscal. The third one is governance. The fourth is operations, and then the fifth is personnel. So one of the suggestions that we make is not necessarily that districts organize their entire strategic plan around this because they might already have their own categories, but if they're not wed to their current categories, it makes life easier if your strategic plan is aligned with CUSAC. Because then when members of the community go to, they, you know, they look at your public board documents, how you're organizing committees, how you're organizing professional development, you have these clear-cut categories for, you know, the overall performance of the district. So that's something that I'm throwing out there that I'm suggesting. And in our needs analysis, we will also dive deep into each of these areas and look at how the CUSAC regulations have changed and what the implications are for classroom teachers, administrators, for parents and students, and all of that. So that's something that will come up. CUSAC is not the most exciting thing in the world, particularly at 7:30 at night, but it's one of those necessary things that we talk about. So now's the fun part, if you will. And this is a little bit theoretical in looking at some best practices and looking at how boards of education, through the strategic plan, they're really establishing brand. The other thing is that strategic plan and use of the word strategy, it's not just strategy to advance goals. A strategic plan is also how you define yourself as being different from other entities. So this is where you define yourself as being unique, how you uniquely serve your constituents, and how you're saying to the world, this is who we are, this is what we stand for, and this is what we're going to try and accomplish collectively over the next three years. So brand is really important. Brand is an idea and a topic and a philosophy and an area of research that's really emerging in education over the past few years. It's been confined to business and industry, but here in New Jersey, brand is important. It impacts property values, it impacts, you know, lots of things, it impacts the how our kids get accepted to college. So your strategic plan is a key component of your brand. So one of the things that we've looked at, the three most important public products that come from a board of education that are consumable by stakeholders, it's not curriculum, because your average stakeholder is not going to delve deep into your curriculum documents. The first one's your strategic plan, if it's accessible. Now, many districts have an 80-page strategic plan that's a link on a website that nobody reads and nobody ever uses. And I'm going to show you some best practices for it being accessible, where it's something that's a single page that can be hanging in classrooms and really driving what people do. The second one is the calendar. The calendar is really important. It's how you organize the time of learning. It's a reflection of what holidays you have off, is a reflection of the diversity in your community, whether you start before Labor Day, whether you start after Labor Day, when you give spring break. Those are all decisions that you make that have really big implications. But when you think about it, what's the one thing from the school district that's most common in homes? It's the calendar hanging on the fridge. So that is a, that is a really important chance. So something to think about. If your strategic plan is one page, put it on the back of your calendar. Because if you want to get at the folks, have it be that back page to the calendar because everyone's going to look at the calendar. And then the last thing that's, that's kind of the other big, is your budget. Now, some people might look at your user-friendly budget, but your budget does communicate your priorities and how you allocate money. Most budgets, 85% of it, is towards labor costs, but what you do with that other 10% to 15% is, says a lot. You have allocated a lot of it towards technology and instructional supports to achieve being future-ready. So how you do that going forward, when you have conversations about how do we spend that 15%, let's go to the strategic plan and see what it says. And so this, once again, becomes part of your brand. So these three things are real, real important components, and you can integrate them together so that the public has an understanding of what exactly the district does. So brand is also image, and you're familiar with a lot of these companies. Brand is also visual identity and getting people to buy into that visual identity. When you look at some of the biggest employers and important brands in each of these states, New Jersey, it's always Johnson &amp; Johnson. That's always our biggest brand in New Jersey. But it also has a regional component where people identify with brand based upon, based upon company and things like that. It's the same thing for school district. So I've worked with districts where the elementary grades have completely different brandings and color schemes and have a different visible identity system than the district, where the board of education has, you know, completely different, a different color scheme than... So this is important as well. This is a time to revisit, does our visual identity system reflect who we are? This is my previous school district, in which we leveraged not only our branding and our relationship with a prominent sports athletic wear company, but also the geography of the location. So it's something to think about. On your website, are you, do you have historical landmarks? Do you have, you have features of the community? Do you use the district website? Do you use your social media to also connect that idea of the community with the school district? One of the things that a lot of districts do, that this was certainly not original in my previous school district, was to celebrate the visual identity system, to pick a day of the week which is your spirit wear day. And you get everyone in the school district involved, but you also get your police and the town council, and you get everyone involved that on that day of the week, maybe it's Cedar Grove Fridays or Cedar Grove Tuesdays, I don't know. One, parents love it because it's one less day you have to worry about coming up with an outfit for your kid. You just find that one T-shirt and a pair of jeans, and they're good. Teachers like it because that's one less outfit they have to worry about. But it also builds that sense of unity, it builds that sense that we're all part of that. Another important component of brand is loyalty, that I share the values of this institution, I stand by it, and it becomes part of my identity as part, as part of the brand. Here's a great example of that. All right? I actually happened to live in 100 and County for a while, where I would say, can I get a Taylor ham, egg, and cheese? And I had crossed the border to where people root for the Eagles, too. That's the other thing. If you're in Giants territory, it's Taylor ham. Once you, once you pass into Eagles territory, it's pork roll, right? Even though Taylor ham's made... But there's an example of regionalized brand loyalty. You'll see this in school districts with loyalty to different schools and different parts of the town, but there's a loyalty to brand. That's really important. And how do you develop that sense of belonging? So one of the things that the strategic plan, by encompassing the voices of everyone in the district, you want to advance that sense of belonging. This is not to be, not be a process where people feel alienated, but rather that they feel included and that they're willing to stand by it. One of my favorite examples of brand, if you remember Seinfeld and David Putty. So are people ready to go this crazy for Cedar Grove? We want them that crazy. Maybe not as crazy as Putty, but that is, that is a good example. The other thing, and this is where we're talking about the vision and mission statement, brand should also express your values. You know, what are your, what are your values as a district? And this sometimes gets into a murky place, but no, we're a public school. We don't, we don't talk about values, but there are some really important values, like scholarship, character, integrity. Those are, you know, agnostic values from other belief systems. And so it's important, you know, fair play, academic integrity, those are all important things. And so there are different visual identifiers for this and different ways to organize that. I've worked with a lot of school districts who use this as, as a way to communicate their values very easily, that everything we do is about student achievement. That's our number-one value, and that everything else, the whole rest of the organization, is organized around that. I've seen other districts do this with family, or they've done it with relationships. So one of the things that I will poke and prod through the stakeholder piece and through the board is to see if something like this bubbles to the top, if we can have an identifier of what are the district values. So I'm just going to play a little video for you that ties into this idea of brand. You guys might know this guy, Tim Tebow. He's pretty famous. So listen to his interview, and then I'm going to ask you to tell me if you can identify, what is Tim Tebow's brand?
Walking on a red carpet, you know, that can be life-changing for people. And so to be able to be part of that and see that and now be able to take that mindset to a field, because so much of handling sports is handling pressure. What pressure do you have if you're 0-for-12 and you're at the plate versus someone that is fighting for their life, versus someone that, you know, we picked up on the side of the street in Haiti because they're crippled or they're unwanted, or they're thrown in the garbage? Like, how do you compare those things? And for me, it's, this is not a comparison, and that's why you're able to handle sports as a game because it still is. Yeah, we can pursue it, we can give so much of our time, energy, and effort to it, but at the end of the day, I know that's not why I'm here. It's not my biggest purpose, it's not my biggest calling, it's not what I want to be, it's not how I want to be known in my life, it's not as a football player, as a baseball player, as, you know, someone that, you know, worked hard to accomplish those things. I want my life to be so much more than that. I want to be someone that was known for bringing faith, hope, and love to those needing a brighter day in the darkest hour of eve. And that is something that is a life calling for me, and so it's so much bigger than sports. But I am so grateful for sports because it gave me a platform to be able to share my love and care for people all over the world, so I wouldn't trade that for anything.
So here you have a celebrity, and he's associated with some different ideas and brands, but I'm going to throw this out to you right now because I think that's a great example. He didn't actually brand himself. He didn't say, I am this. Actually, he went out of the way to say, I'm not a football player, I'm not a baseball player. So do me a favor, on your own, or you can turn and talk, take 30 seconds and come back to me, what is Tim Tebow's brand? What did he communicate there? Okay, so some people, all right, so let's jump in right there. Tim Tebow, a very religious person. Now, in this, he said bring faith and hope, but he never once identified himself as a Christian, he never did anything like that, but I heard some of the things you were saying, and you write that, you said brand in a nutshell, church and God, right? Anyone get anything other than that?
Yeah.
Hey, what'd you get?
Compassion.
Compassion?
He's compassionate, he wants to help people, he's positive, he's going to figure out how to fix something.
Seriously, you guys didn't watch the video.
How he can fix something when something's, it's not right, no matter what it is in the spectrum of not being right, he's going to be that person that's going to fix it.
So, and you trust, and you trust in Tim Tebow saying this because you have some outside knowledge of Tim Tebow, perhaps? How do you trust that he's genuine in this?
Well, because we've seen it, he's downstream.
Well, wait, he didn't say anything about the church, though. How do you guys know he's a holy roller?
Yeah. So, so what David, David's like a plant for me here today. You're doing great. No, you're great, your answers are perfect. So, brand is what you do.
Yeah.
It's not what you say you're going to do. So your strategic plan is not just about what you say you're going to do, but it's what you actually do. So where folks lose trust in anybody, never mind a school district, is when there's a gap between what you say you're going to do and what you actually do. So what you need to make sure is that in your strategic plan, one, you don't promise things that you can't do. You don't say that we're going to have 100% of kids all pass park. I don't think anyone can say that, or every year we're going to have 100% grad rate. I would love that. That's wonderful, but in the realities of the world we live in, that's not always going to happen. No police chief says that there will be no crime in my town, it's that we're going to fight crime, right? So bridging that gap between what we say we're going to do and what we're going to do, that's really important to accomplish, and that's where brand comes into this in your strategic plan. So here's a good example. The Cedar Rapids School District in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, they have fantastic branding, they do great things with their strategic plan, and you're going to see some models. But there was a lot of controversy about acceptance about two years ago. And this is what they issued. This is what they issued. And this is from middle America, they just put out there, we welcome. And they listed all these different groups. This is an expression of values. So one, it's saying that we do it, but we're also just putting it out there in case anyone doesn't think we do it, we're espousing those values. So some districts have taken a stand on that, and they want to do things like that, and then they made this part of their strategic plan as a follow-up to them. The other thing is that you have a trusted product so that you deliver, right? What is the product of learning? This is very important for parents because in New Jersey, people pick where they're going to live, based upon the quality of the schools. So branding, you're going to all get a banner from future-ready schools, take pictures with it, slap it on the website, hang it outside there. I'm going to give you some examples. These are some common, you know, in New Jersey, some high-performing districts have these. And that's okay that you put that up there, but then combine it with your logo and integrate it, and then take it a step further, put it in there with an identifiable kid. So here we are, yes, we're a high-performing school, here's our logo, and here's an example because everyone knows this kid's story, and now it becomes real. So not only is it a trusted product that we have banners, but here's an example of a kid who is a product of that trusted thing. So that's suggesting to build brand, but ultimately, it comes down to unity. And your strategic plan will fail if you don't unite the community around that plan. So branding, in the essence, is all about unity, and when you look at the highest-performing school districts, it's because you have that all oars in the water. Now, can people disagree? Can people dissent? Absolutely. But when you have those handful of goals and have a small number of them, then everyone can get on board. So here's an example, and this is actually a derivative of Cedar Rapids, this is my previous school district, one-page strategic plan that can hang in every classroom, it can go on the back of a calendar that's hanging on every fridge. Here's another one, Verona Public Schools. Really, really good school district, they did a little different tweak on it, but here is their strategic plan in one place. Because parents are busy, and to engage them in reading a really big strategic plan, not going to happen, even less so for people who don't have kids in the schools. But this, this is easy, and it lets everyone know what's going on. And I love this one. This is the Ramsey School District. And they basically articulated their strategic plan in terms of, what is the profile of a graduate? What is the profile of a graduate? What's interesting is they put reflection at the very top, which goes back to John Dewey and metacognition and reflection. So there's a lot, this is heavy when you dig deep into this. But once again, can this go on the back of a school calendar? Absolutely. You can put this on folders, you can, it's easy to put it out there, it's consumable on social media, and so that's going to be one of our goals, is that when we unveil the strategic plan, yes, we're going to have, you know, a 10-page document that if people want to go online and read it on a Saturday night at 8:00 when they have nothing else going on, but so that when, but not only that, it's something we can all point to, is that if we have some type of graphic organizer that we can put out there. So brand is a combination of all of these, and we're going to look to attend to all of those in the strategic planning process. The other piece of this is how do we spread the word about this process and as it happens and how it's executed? So it's really important to have a plan to address diverse mixed media, and when you look at the history of communication, we went from localized to now we're in mass dialogue. So it's not enough to just be on Twitter or Facebook, you have to be on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, you have to recruit on LinkedIn, and that you have synergy across there with your message. But as you're doing things, this is how you're going to remind the public that you're executing the strategic plan. So you put out a tweet, hey, everyone, remember goal number two was, you know, operations or it was student achievement or it was personalization? Here are some examples of it. And it's also how you put out your district newsletters. So in the middle, our messages are going to be consumed, and it's really important that you have mixed media. And my suggestion for that is print media as well as online media, and don't just use Twitter, also use Facebook, there's generational components to this as well, Instagram is great, and then YouTube. You guys already have a YouTube channel? It's great that you're broadcasting this and that you're doing all that. But in the end, you want to celebrate all the wonderful things going on here. And the strategic plan, in and of itself, is a celebration of the strength of this district, the fact that you're taking the time to do this, that you're going through this, shows the quality that you have here. Another little check on this, as you're doing this, do a Google News search. So don't just type into Google, but type Cedar Grove School District and then hit News. Go through this process. Have you done this before?
No, we have a running thing that you can't find our school district now, yeah. Because we...
There seems to be an interesting issue related to Google search.
It brings you to Wikipedia, right? So, yes, I had the same thing. So there you go, that identifies something that should be a goal in the strategic plan or at least an element of a goal.
That's something that should be fixed tomorrow.
Yes, absolutely. So, sorry about that, I didn't mean to. Oh, no, but the Google News search, so here's what's different about the News search. The News search just brings up news results. So it's just on news and media, and when that comes up, one, is everything negative? Is it only about the time that someone passed by a bus and clipped the arm? Is, you know, is it only about things like that? Or is it about the positive things? And then line that up with your strategic planning goals. You know, do we have articles about personalization? Do we have articles about future-ready? Do we have articles about efficiency and operations, and do we have all that? So the thing that I leave you with, the three most important products of the school district, strategic plan, number one, your calendar and your budget. And if you can find a way, and we're going to help you do this, combine all three, it's going to help you move things forward. But you already have amazing things going on, this is just that pathway to the future. So I'm happy to answer to any questions, to backtrack and to review some things for folks who came in a little bit after we started.
I just want to say that I think that the superintendent is actually doing it and the administration is actually doing, they're telling our story. Because if you're following different assets or facets of social media, no matter where it is, they are, I was talking to Mike in executive session already, they're telling the story. Mr. Cosner did it today, Mrs. DiMaggio did it, Mrs. Dyer did it recently, because when you're looking, when you're following them, they're talking about, we were also talking about the personalized learning, how you're breaking out, how it's all that different stuff, and they're constantly are telling our story about what we're doing to differentiate ourselves on how we're different and in the different things that we're doing.
So building upon those strengths is then to incorporate that into the strategic plan as to ways to make that more widespread in which you're engaging teachers in telling that story, and students in telling that story, and parents, and PTOs, and members of the community who celebrate everything that's going on here. Because, you know, public schools are the backbone of our country, and so it's really important that we, in this day and age, we celebrate all that they do for our kids. And you guys have a great district. So this is going to be a process. Tracy Severance, Dr. Tracy Severance is going to be a part of this as well, and we'll be moving forward starting in a couple of weeks, and those dates will be coming out from the superintendent. Any questions for me, comments, concerns?
I have to ask this.
Sure.
Well, what is your thoughts on school districts using just a social media specialist to get that information out? To, to, I'm beyond...
Sure. So there is the New Jersey School Public Relations Association, which is the association of people who have that position, where they do share best practices. You have a lot of forward-thinking superintendents who take that onto themselves and do that as an unpaid extra component of their job. But some districts who have the resources do hire someone. I like the model, and this is emerging more, where you integrate it into marketing classes, and in the schools, you actually create social media ambassadors amongst students who then train parents, and then it's more of a distributed model rather than paying someone, you know, a salary to just be tweeting all day. It's much more organic, and not only that, even if you have someone who's sitting in an office tweeting all day, they're not going to be at the soccer game, the volleyball game, the band competition, the play, whereas when you distribute it amongst the parents, the staff, and the students, and train them on digital citizenship and best practices, first of all, you get way more content that's shared, and it's more reflective of the diversity of your community. And you save money in doing it. And that's a job, too, by the way. You're also preparing kids, you're also preparing, you're preparing kids for a career. You know, that is, social media manager, you're preparing kids for a career that they could definitely do later on.
I like the marketing class.
Yeah, I think that's brilliant, yeah, I like that.
That's what I'm here for. So if you guys need to reach me, I'll give you my Twitter handle, which is probably the best way to get in touch with me.
Told you.
If you have any questions.
Do what you do it.
You can DM me there, and we'll be here through that whole process, and I'll be back again in the winter, oops, I went back to the same place, and I'll be back again in the winter to help you guys wrap up the whole process and fill out the plan. So for those of you who are on Twitter, I've seen, this is great, you guys are all following me, that's fantastic. Well, thank you, this was wonderful, I'll stick around and answer some more of your questions offline if you like, but that's what we got, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
For working with you over the next number of months.
Text me that now.
Should we?
No, just text me that.
Yeah. Right. So before we move on, we're just going to take about a minute or so, so anybody who's kind of sat here the whole time and needs to get going can go, and that's totally fine, and then, but we'll pick up again in like two minutes.
Two minutes, okay.
Back to presentations, so for committee reports, before any of us get started, we have our student rep here who left play practice to come here and must get back right away. So we're going to let him go first, and then we're going to pause for about two seconds, let him go, and then we'll move on with the millions of things that Mr. Showmaker attended in the last couple of weeks.
No, 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 as long as Nick talks about the play, I will be quiet.
All right, well, are we taking bets? All right, Mr. Slendoria, welcome.
Thank you. So October's been a really busy month at the high school. So one of the big things was October 10th, the 9th through 11th graders took the PSAT to practice for the actual SAT and give them a starting point where they need to study. And during that time, the guidance office prepared, had a speaker come in, they talked about scholarships and the right ones to find for us and which ones, you know, which ones to write the essay for. So it was a really good experience to try and, you know, get a starting point on where we should look for the money for college. And then October, and then on October 12th, we had Speaker Timothy Showmaker give a presentation on vaping and the dangers that it poses, and it was really good. I heard a lot of good feedback from the students that it was very factual and it gave, it was very like accurate representation of that. We don't know what's going to happen with it, but this is kind of new science that we're kind of the guinea pigs for, so it was a really good presentation on that. And then October 16th, today, the all-school council, we held our annual leadership day to plan events for the school year. So we got a few ideas approved by Mr. Mangili. So one of them, this really fun one, is we're going to have a deck the halls contest at the school. So each grade is going to get a hallway, and we're going to have to decorate it and turn it into kind of a winter wonderland, and it's going to be judged. And then we possibly want to hold a dance at the Robert O'Toole Community Center in town for in January to kind of give the students that, don't go to prom, an opportunity to get out, dressed up, and have fun. And then one of the biggest changes, that we're moving lip sync to March 22nd, because we found that when it's in January, a lot of the student participation tends to drop off after lip sync. So if we can move it to March, we can try and extend student participation later on into the school year and maybe get, so next year, we're not going to have a problem with getting the student body involved. And then, so this week, this is show week, so October 19th, 20th, and 21st, the cast of John Paul Sartre's play No Exit is involved in Tech Week. So the shows are Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM, and then Sunday at 2:00 PM, and the show's about, it's this really interesting show about three people who are in hell, and it's how, it's not conventional torture, it's a little bit more psychological torture for them. It's really interesting and a really thought-provoking show. On October 24th, students and faculty of the high school will be getting ready, will be participating in Union Day shirts, and the shirts look like this. This year, they're really, really nice.
Very nice.
They're really nice this year. And Union Day, its purpose is to foster more kindness, understanding, and inclusion at the high school, and Cedar Grove is going to be participating in this with schools across the nation. October 29th.
What date?
October 24th.
Thank you, sorry.
October 29th, the guidance office will be hosting the admissions game in the auditorium. So this event presents college admissions as a game, and you're trying to win over the counselors, and I can attest that it was a really great experience and really helped me get a jumpstart on my application last year. And then one of the last things is October 30th, the music department at the high school will be hosting CG Tonight, which is an open-mic night, and it gives students an opportunity to showcase their talents, anywhere from singing to reading poetry. So we got a pretty jam-packed month.
Absolutely. Okay, well, now you can take a breath. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now you can go. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
And good luck. Nope, totally, absolutely, that's totally fine.
No, no, go.
You're a busy, busy man.
Have a good night.
You, too.[1728.88]
So should we go down to Mr. Showner?
No, I got nothing. Nick did it all.
All right, actually.
I was, I was happy. He almost covered it all.
You sure? I'll give you a moment.
Well, we did the college night, we were out with the financial aide, yeah, that was, we did that.
Right, the financial aide guy, Mr. Ed.
Yes, he was very good.
Zamora, I wanted to say that. Yeah, no, he was great, absolutely.
Yes.
Same person as last year, right? Yeah, that was, that was great. So, and you know what, in all honesty, as I was sitting there last year as a parent of a junior, I was thinking that as a parent of a freshman, that would be good. Because the way he just talks about everything and how you start planning your freshman year, I felt like I was almost, I, you know, the family was behind, you know? So I think I'll attend this year with my freshmen and say, okay, this is what we should be thinking about now for the next few years. So very, I thought it was great. So, thank you. Thank you for bringing those to the high school. We appreciate that. We appreciate it. Speaking of great help, we as a board want to thank everybody for the referendum passing.
Yes.
The safety, security, we're extremely happy that that happened and we thank everybody who made it possible. And now it's on us and really Mr. DeVita to kind of get the ball rolling with all of that. So again, we want to thank everyone who helped us and we're very excited about everything that's with the referendum and making everything safer. And that's very important to us. So, so thank you to everyone. Anybody else? Did anybody add?
To the rec, the board. And there's, they have a lot going on. I know last weekend they had the, was it the movies or the fun night out? I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but, and I know that was a hit. This Thursday is Real Panthers Wear Pink at 6:00.
Yes, it is.
At Panther Park. So I think that's a big night. It's always a very successful night. And that's it, they've got a lot going on. I have to take more diligent notes next time.
They do a great job. They definitely have expanded over the last few years.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, Miss Migga's into a test, we used to just go there and talk about the pool and now, I mean, there's just so many different events going on. So it's, it's nice to see that happening.
A lot of fun stuff.
Absolutely.
The movie was great, by the way.
Oh, was it? There you go. Movie night.
A little cold, though.
Perfect weather.
Perfect weather.
Perfect.
All right, so now we're going to go to our next board presentation. And I think Ms. Jessen is standing closest to the computer, so she's going to be the one talking. And you're going to talk about which one first.
The agenda says South Africa first, but.
But you're going to go the other way first.
It looks like this is up, so.
Totally fine. Absolutely.
Basically, it's the same document that I presented to Mr. Mangili and Mr. Featherman. It's, it's an itinerary for the trip this year for the music department. Every other year, we collaborate with Mount Anthony Union High School in Bennington, Vermont. My best friend teaches there, has a similar program to mine, and her name's Lynn Sweet. And our choirs, our orchestras, and our bands get together. And we usually do it in two weekends, but our schedules between all-state and APs and different things, we're going to squeeze it into four days. May 17th and 18th, we're proposing that that's when we're in Cedar Grove. And Friday, May 17th is a school day. And there are two AP exams in the morning, which involve about six of our students. But they would take the exam, hopefully eat lunch, and then return and rehearse with the rest of the group. So our music students that day would be rehearsing in the auditorium with the Mount Anthony Union High School students on a theme called It Takes Two, focusing on singer-songwriter teams, duets, but mostly songwriting teams and the music of famous composers like Rodgers and Hammerstein, Aaron's and Flaherty, Lerner and Lowe. And the kids are really excited about it, they've already started coming up with some suggestions. So that's just that one day, May 17th. And then we have a concert at 7:00 PM. And the donations proceeds go to the music department. Then the next day, we have a charter bus that would take us to the city and we would be seeing Once on this Island, which is coincidentally, and good for us, is the songwriting team, Aaron's and Flaherty, Once on this Island. And a wonderful show that I saw this summer at my Broadway workshop and I want to share it with the kids. And I thought it'd be even better to have the two groups go together and will probably take up most of the theater. It's theater in the round there and so we're excited about that. And then we would have dinner together in the city. Then Vermont would go home that night. And then the next day, we would board a bus early and that'd be Sunday, the 19th, and rehearse all day in Bennington and have a concert that evening at 7:00 PM. And then we would stay at the Hampton Inn in Bennington. The next morning, wake up, have breakfast, and go to Lake George, where I used to work my summer jobs when I was in high school, and take a steamboat ride on Lake George, the Mohican or the Loch Tousecrumont, have lunch, and maybe mini golf a little bit, and then come home Monday. So the students would technically not be in Cedar Grove High School and miss a day of school on Monday, May 20th. So that's what we're proposing for the trip. The package, based on 40 paid passengers, is $4.35. And we are offering an option for students that can only do the New York-New Jersey portion.
Sounds great, as usual.
I know some of you don't know, but I, pretty much every other year, come and ask about the Vermont trip.
Right, right. So it's kind of more like a done deal. Like, you know, what are you doing this year?
Yeah, we're excited.
We observed workshop, famous composer David Loud, and he does narration and talks about a composer of the year that he chooses. And he did Hal Prince and Stephen Sondheim this year, which they're not a songwriting team, but it was fascinating and his narration inspired Lynn and I to do the It Takes Two theme and also incorporate the drama students. So that's one thing I forgot to say. We're incorporating and inviting the drama class so that they can do the narration in the concert. And so do a little bit of history too of the songwriting teams.
That's great that you're incorporating them this year. That's fantastic. Thank you. And thank you for doing this.
Yeah.
Now you're going to switch gears and?
Yes.
Okay.
Switching gears and I'd like to present the Globetrotter 2018 trip that was to South Africa. I think that the presentation is going to speak for itself, but I do want you to know that one of the favorite moments of the students that, you know, we even still talk about in the hallway sometimes, was the visit to the village that was near where we had our safari outside. We went to the safari in Kruger National Park, but then there was a village about two miles away that we visited and it was one of our favorite experiences. And I made a little movie of pictures that Andrea Watson and I took and I have a gift for you too. The kids and I sampled these chocolates, they're very good. And I kept them in the refrigerator, okay? So, and also when we, when we went, it was their winter, you know, so it wasn't like they were going to melt. So this is for the board to share. You can even wait until the next board meeting or, you know, whatever. And then these are for Mr. Featherman, they're the Birds card set, The Birds of South Africa.
Ah, very nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Where's the nobody get the chocolate? I don't know.
They're not going to make it down there, so just.
That's okay, they're from June, so it's great.
Chocolate, it's really good.
That's awesome.
That's great.
And the speakers are open?
That's great, let's go back this way.
The speakers are turned off?
Oh. They should be, because the, of the strategic planning person.
That was their only water supply, that tower, and the faucet was broken. So it was really good for the kids to see and feel how lucky we are. We played soccer and had races at this field. That was our guide that showed us around the village. And our safari. They had to get up at 4:45 AM. They gave us ponchos. They were lined with fleece. It was freezing. And then they served us lunch and promised us we would see the lions next. And they were right. That was the mama trying to lead her cubs across the road. They were afraid, but then she eventually got them to come over. That's where our, our guide treated us to lunch. That's not a real rhino. The 12 apostles in the background, we learned a lot about the landscape. That's just a part of Table Mountain and that's the cable car that we took to the top. This is when we ventured out to try some local food. And that's where we stayed in Cape Town. One day it was pouring rain, so we went to the Botanical Gardens. Those were signs about the drought and guidelines we had to follow, about three-minute showers and not drinking the water. This is where the Two Oceans meet. The baboons are like the deer in Cedar Grove. No lie. They're just right there on the sidewalks. That's where we had a fish dinner. They all tried it. And then when we got to see the penguins. And our final night, we went to the Africa Cafe, performances, face painting, the most delicious meal we had. And music was a part of every day, which was really cool. The menu was on that glass mason jar with a lumineer in the middle. And that's our tour guide Bruce, and this is when he said goodbye to us at the airport.
Thank you very much for also the transportation to the airport to JFK.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
I am told it was a trip of a lifetime.
Yeah.
Angela, you want me to shut this off? Thanks again, Jen, and thanks to the entire Globetrotters group who, you know, make this possible for the kids to go on these amazing adventures. We really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, are we?
Is this the part where I accelerate?
Yeah, this is the part where I read really quickly.
We start going. Ready, set.
All righty.
Here we go. Pay attention down there.
From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B4?
So moved. Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of September 18th. B2 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of September. B3 is a motion to rescind Resolution B3 from the August 21st board meeting and reapprove the treasurer's report for the months of June and July. And B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Educat, to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Migga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B5?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to pay the list of bills that were in our packet. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Migga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shonar.
Aye.
Mrs. Dye.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B6 through B14?
So moved. Second.
B6 is a motion to submit the amendment to the 2019 ESEA grant to reflect the allocation of carryover funds on the amount listed. B7 is a motion to approve the submission of the following transportation contracts that were previously approved in the warding of bids. B8 is a motion to approve the location agreement with IKA Collective and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. B9 is a motion to approve the school safety and security plan annual review statement of assurance. B10 is a motion to approve ML Inc.'s change order number nine in the amount listed. B11 is a motion to approve ML Inc.'s change order number 10 in the amount listed. B12 is a motion to approve ML Inc.'s final payment application number 17 in the amount listed. B13 is a motion to submit the 2017-18 New Jersey Department of Schools Self-Assessment for Determining Grades under the Anti-Bullying, Bullying Bills Act, Rights Act, oh boy, say that five times. And B14 is a motion for approval.
And B fourteen is a motion for approval of, um, the professional appointments listed. I don't have to read the rest of it, do I? Any discussion?
No ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Diciara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miega.
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Um, I'm abstaining from B seven and I to everything else.
And Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under personnel, can I have a motion for S one through S twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
S one is a motion to approve on second reading the trip to Orlando, Florida for the girls softball team, um, for the dates listed. S two is a motion to approve on second reading the trip to Berlin, Prague, Krakow and Budapest for the Globe Trotters, uh, and the date has been changed, um, on the agenda, it should be from April nineteenth to April twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand nineteen. S...
What?
No, you won't. You're not, it's the twentieth. S three is a motion to approve Bruno Majoria, MMS, maternity leave replacement music and band teacher for the amount listed, for the dates listed. S four is a motion to approve Bruno Majoria to receive a prorated stipend for the amount following for the eighteen nineteen school year. S five is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring start date procedure. S six is a motion to approve Rami Rattel, Cedar Grove High School head varsity wrestling coach for the eighteen nineteen school year, for the amount listed. S seven is a motion to approve the following staff members for the position of performance matters district liaison. S eight is a motion to approve the following staff at the high school for park math prep zero period. S nine is a motion to approve Kayla Amato, substitute teacher, uh, at the rate listed. S ten is a motion to retroactively approve Katie Hanlon, athletic trader, trainer, to teach CPR at the rate listed. S eleven is a motion to approve the following employees for pathway instruction. S twelve is a motion to approve the following pilot programs and volunteer advisors for the eighteen nineteen school year. S thirteen is a motion to approve Steve Gallagher to perform administrative support services retroactive to September. S fourteen is a motion to reimburse the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. S fifteen is a motion to reimburse Michelle Miega, board member, for fingerprinting expenses. S sixteen is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. S seventeen is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Cedar Grove Board of Education and the Custodial Association for the eighteen nineteen, nineteen twenty school years. S eighteen is a motion to set the salaries for the custodial staff members shown below. S nineteen is a motion to approve Melissa Hill, pet band advisor, retroactive to September. S twenty is a motion to set the salary and rates for the following employees for the eighteen nineteen school year. S twenty-one is a motion to approve Maria Rodriguez for prep period payment. S twenty-two is to approve Jody Inglis, Cedar Grove High School vice principal, starting on or before December seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. S twenty-three is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S twenty-four is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence and S twenty-five is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Um, I'm gonna say any discussion and then I'm gonna say something. Uh, I just wanna welcome, uh, Ms. Inglis, who's actually in the audience and we're very excited to have you start in our district and we look forward to working with you. Absolutely. Any other discussion?
That's great. Yeah, welcome.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Diciara.
Um, I abstain from myself in S twenty-three, otherwise, yes.
Mrs. Miega.
I abstain from S fifteen, otherwise, yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
I abstain from myself on S twenty-three, otherwise, yes.
Mr. Schoner.
I'm abstaining from myself in S twenty-three and everything else is aye.
And Mrs. Dai.
I'm abstaining for myself in S twenty-three and everything else is yes. That's a lot. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S twenty, X, S twenty-six?
So moved.
Anyone?
Second.
S twenty-six is a motion to approve Mike Tedesco to write curriculum for both computer science and computer programming at the rate listed. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Diciara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miega.
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S twenty-seven through S thirty-two?
So moved.
Second.
S twenty-seven is a motion to approve the subscription busing contracts, uh, with the parents of the, uh, student with the number listed. S twenty-eight is a motion to approve the subscription busing contracts with the parents of the student with the number listed. S twenty-nine is a motion to approve the following parent transportation contract for the eighteen nineteen school year. S thirty is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parents of the student number listed. S thirty-one is a motion to approve the subscription busing contracts with the parents of the student with the number listed. S thirty-two is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Diciara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miega.
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
I abstain from S thirty-two and yes to the others. That was a lot of reading. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda.
Go ahead, go on.
Seeing none. Announcement of future meetings, uh, I know it says November sixth, but no, that's not right, it's actually tentatively going to be November twelfth, it's a Monday. Is that a what? No, no, there's gonna be a second one, November twentieth as well. So, uh, North End, six thirty, executives, seven thirty, regular. Uh, I thank everyone who left already but who was here for our str- first, uh, strategic planning meeting, we're very excited to tick off that process. And I have to say, it is, you know, a big undertaking of, of the board and our superintendent... Are you, did you, did you hear?
Don't worry about him.
We were just thanking you for your massive undertaking that you've agreed to.
That was my moment and I was...
As usual.
I was distracted. You lost your moment.
I have no idea. We'll discuss it.
We'll discuss it, yeah.
Absolutely. We will, right. But thank you, again, for your efforts and your huge undertaking.
We're hoping to get through next ten minutes.
And, and I think also that we are going down to receive, uh, future-ready status.
Yes, actually, most of us will be away next week, we'll be traveling, we will be at the New Jersey School Boards Association Annual Conference, we're very excited. Where we will, yes, our second year, well, some of us our second year, others have attended numerous years.
Prior to, uh, us going down, the board has, would never went down.
Right.
Right.
Right, we didn't.
No.
But now we do.
But the, the, the high school is receiving future-ready status and so is...
As is North End.
As is North End, that's right.
Yes, so we're very excited to have Mr. Mangili join us and Ms. Dai joining us all on stage when we accept...
Yes.
That banner and recognition for being future-ready in the other two schools.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, even better.
Supers can be up there too. It is.
It, it actually, all joking aside, it actually is really great to go away because you meet, uh, a bunch of different, um, boards from different places, you get some great ideas, there really are a lot of, of great speakers, so I'm looking forward to it.
It, it, it was actually really interesting last year because when you sit through, you can sit through all the different seminars and they have other supers and other, uh, board members and other teachers talking about what they're doing in their schools and it's a great way, we did it with our Ed Foundation, to be able to go into the, uh, the room and have them really, you know, fifty minutes talk about something that interests you.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah.
So we look, we look forward to coming back with a, a long list of to-do items.
To do, yes.
And our future-ready banners.
I'm sure the administration looks forward to that too. All right, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Mrs. Diciara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miega.
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yeah, aye, yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes, and I'm gonna end the public session and we're gonna reconvene in exec.
Yes.
So, thank you, everyone, have a good night.